To this September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Grandquist.
Here.
Arns.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Yurin.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Clausen.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
Voting in favor: McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Snorton, Webb, Yurin. Voting in opposition: Hildebrand. Motion carries.
But then look for a motion to... Was that an abstention?
I'm sorry. I didn't know you were abstaining from the brand. Motion carries.
Okay. Item number six. We'd look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to item number seventeen on the council agenda. Under public hearings and related action, I will open this public hearing to discuss the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand thirty-four Capital Improvement Program, which includes the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-nine one- and six-year plan for street improvements. To give us some background on this and kick off the discussion, we'll hear from Lyle Lutt, Operations Director. Good evening, Lyle.
Good evening, Lyle Lutt, Operations guy for the city of Norfolk. Going to talk about CIP here for a little bit. We can get into the weeds as much as you want. I know there's a full agenda, so we'll kind of let you drive the speed of what we're talking about. In the agenda packet, it starts on page forty, goes all the way through to about page fifty-four. I'll give a general overview of the document for the council, the citizens, the folks tuning in at home. If you want to look through that and start queuing up some questions that we can perhaps address at the conclusion of this discussion, then that's how we'll proceed. This is generally the same document you saw on July twenty-fourth during the budget session. There's been some very minor changes, which is typical as we go through this throughout the budgeting process throughout the year, clarifying some wording, maybe some movement of some money from one year to another, modification to the dollar amount. Took this to the Planning Commission Subcommittee on August fourteenth and the Planning Commission on September seventh, to the document that you see here before you. The whole idea of the CIP, this plan, is a ten-year outlook for purchases, projects, equipment in excess of thirty thousand dollars going out, excuse me, in excess of fifty thousand dollars going out in the future. It starts in February, March timeframe, usually at the conclusion of the council retreat when we divisions get to evaluate what they're looking at within their walls, trying to figure out the plans, combining that with what the elected officials and the body has for goals for the city going forward. Division heads give their input. They get a document very similar to this, and they try and incorporate what changes they foresee or what changes they need into this ten-year outlook. It can be a little bit challenging at times to figure out what their division's going to need ten years out. Taking, for example, annexation, perhaps one of the changes with the type of snowplow that we use. Technology advances with fire engines or ambulances, so this has to be able to change just a little bit over time, and it does every year. Once the division heads kind of give their feedback, the CIP team meets and talks about it, gets it into a rough draft form, puts it on the shelf, and they go, we go through the budgetary process. Throughout that budgetary process, that sometimes leads to changes. Things dawn on us that we realize, ah, we got to include this in the CIP or change it in the CIP. Ultimately, what this spreadsheet does is plays into the long-term financial plan, which needs to stay in the positive. In the accounting world, we want that to be on the uptrend every time. Also, to keep in mind, because this is a question that frequently comes up, the cost of an item today is not necessarily going to be the same cost as it's going to be in ten years. So there's an inflationary factor that gets put into that so that there's enough money set aside when the time comes to make that purchase. This program works best if a division can foresee a need and project it out eight, ten years in advance. Gets plunked in there, and it slowly trickles forward as time goes by. It gets a little more challenging, considerably more challenging, if a high-dollar purchase needs to be done next year or within the next couple of years, because there's only a finite amount of money. And if something gets injected that wasn't planned, something else has to be postponed or delayed. That being said, nothing on here is really set in stone. Project costs change, equipment costs change. Sometimes a piece of equipment may be a lemon and we need to replace it sooner. Sometimes we have a piece of equipment that we can stretch out to make longer. We have an incredible staff that does a great job of maintaining and treating the equipment like their own, better than their own oftentimes, so we can fully maximize the equipment. So with that being said, before we get too much into the anatomy, is there any overview questions, high-level questions about CIP? Otherwise, I'll continue on briefly. Please feel free to interrupt. As we look at this document, it can be very confusing to process when you first start out. So I want to draw your attention, start in the top-left corner here, and you're going to see the project number in the first column, followed by a division abbreviation in the second column. So whatever division is you're interested in, you'll find it there. The first four or five pages are general fund divisions. The ones after that are enterprise fund and then CHAF, the highway and street allocation fund. And then finally, at the back end, I'll talk about just a little bit, it's a breakdown by funding source. So you can see the division column, the description generally of what that is. You'll notice administration and streets has a lot of entries. Streets is very heavily equipment-based, so you'll see a lot of equipment in there. Everything on here throughout this document has a funding source, an abbreviation. That abbreviation can be found in the top margin there, if you're wondering how something is going to get paid for. The project priority, which ends up being a question frequently asked as well, is what's the science behind that? And I wouldn't say there isn't science, as much as it is an art. For some division, an item might be very high priority, but in the overall aspect of the city, it might be a B priority, vice versa. And the same could be said vice versa, where the administration wants something to be a higher priority. So ultimately, the staff, the CIP team, has a final say on what the priority list is. The next column is the estimated cost for the projects. You'll notice some of them, especially multi-year projects, engineering, the levy control span multiple years. So we try and do our best to project how much is going to be spent in each year, and knowing that sometimes that changes. And then you can see each of those years from next year on out to see what the purchases are anticipated to be in excess of fifty thousand dollars. As I mentioned previously, the general fund goes all the way through page number forty-four or so roughly, before it gets into the enterprise funds. The CHAF funds, this is another question that frequently pops up, is when's my street getting repaired? If there's viewers or citizens or elected officials that are interested, the CHAF fund starts on page forty-nine. You can see where the streets are to be replaced in that aspect. And then starting on page fifty-one through the end of the document, fifty-one through the end of this spreadsheet, talks about, starting last year, we did a breakdown of the funding sources, the various funding sources to you. You can see, okay, council priority dollars are paying for these items, and ARP is paying for this, and so on and so forth down the line. That is high-level overview. Is there anything in there that has questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, Lyle, for that overview. So maybe just talk a little bit about the process. This is not the first time the council's been seeing this. In fact, we've discussed and reviewed the CIP multiple times leading up to this meeting. But fair to say, in general, this is, this document's a roadmap of planning for major capital investments over a multi-year period. And it keeps us, it keeps elected officials and staff on track in terms of where we need to dedicate resources as we, as we plan to move forward.
That's correct, to the best of our ability. And sometimes we can't anticipate big industry moving into the community, or whatever it might be, however that plays out. But it's all our, everybody putting their heads together to try and put a document, a roadmap, financial roadmap to a timeline.
And as you stated, the discussion really starts in the first quarter of the year after the council meets for its retreat.
Yeah, so we pretty much begin with the end in mind here. So tonight, we'll be looking at the budget. We're going to start that process again. Well, the budget will go into effect October one, obviously, kind of get our feet underneath us. Come December, January, we're going to start this whole deal over again, hopefully with a retreat. And then we'll start the CIP process while the snow's flying. And shortly thereafter, that, we'll be talking about budget stuff again. So this rinse and repeat till next year.
And this is, this plan in its entirety is included on the city website, can be accessible by citizens on the website.
That's good. And it should be, I printed most of this stuff off of the packet that's published as well.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Specific questions or general questions about the CIP?
I don't have a question, but I got more of a statement. I think that the council should have a workshop around this CIP to, for us to get a better general understanding of the direction it's going and why things are classified the way they are. And maybe there's some projects that we think are more important than others and get more council input on it.
Yeah, that's warranted as well. A great time to do that is around council retreat time, because that allows elected body, you as individual elected officials, as wards, as a body, to figure out what your individual priorities are, your ward priorities, your body priorities. And then we as staff can try and incorporate what you want from there into this document and for these division head budgets.
Just make that happen.
Okay, I'll try. Other questions or comments?
I have one comment here. You know, I'm looking at the, under the parks division.
Okay, what page are you on for the?
I'm on page forty-two on item twenty-eight. I see about one hundred and twenty-five thousand to resurface the basketball courts at Central Park and Berry Hill. And that's twenty-thirty. That's one where, you know, obviously, back to Justin's point, if you have a workshop on that, I would want to see that moved up quite a bit. I witnessed those courts are in really bad shape, but it's just nice that you've recognized that and it's on the sheet, you know?
You know, it's, it's a great comment. And what we always got to remember is, any decision we make, every decision has a consequence. So if we move that from one twenty-five, I'm not saying it's a bad idea by any means, but if we move that backward or closer in time versus further out, if there is the money that's available there, that's great. If not, we may have to decide, okay, then a dump truck might have to be postponed, or something along those lines. So it's just something to keep in mind. But, yep. Great question. Is there others or comment? All right, I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Lyle. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I will move to close the hearing and proceed to item number eighteen, and look for a motion to consider Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash fifty-four, adopting the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand thirty-four Capital Improvement Program, which includes the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-nine one- and six-year plan for street improvements.
I'll offer consideration of Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash fifty-four.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on this, council? We didn't mention specifically the one- and six-year street plan in this regard, but as you look at the budget for the coming year at least, we'll see at least two-point-six million dollars in street improvements coming in the next budget year. Steve, we don't want to completely pass over that without saying, making mention of the one- and six-year street plan, because I know a lot of work goes on to put that together within streets. So do you want to make any brief comment on one- and six-year street plan and the input that goes, the public input that goes along with that?
A couple of things, I think, that tie in maybe to some past questions. So the first six years of the ten-year capital improvement plan would constitute the one- and six-year plan, the first year being the one-year plan, and the next five years would make up the rest of the six-year program. Every year, we meet, we have an open house and meet with the public and capture public comment on where they see needs. And quite frequently, we're able to make some adjustment and incorporate those needs into an existing project, usually as it relates to an overlay or concrete repairs. Sometimes we can even incorporate pedestrian access items, or you'll see these, what we call RRFBs, or rapid flashing beacons for pedestrian crossings. And so as we capture that, we're able to pull that information in and quite often make some adjustments and make those, incorporate those. The other thing that we're able to do is, when Andy was preparing and presenting the budget, you'll see that we budget conservatively in terms of our revenue. But when we sit down about six months from now and start to prepare that, if we take that difference between our budgeted revenue and six months from now, we'll be looking at projected revenue for this year. And most of the time, there's a positive difference there, and those dollars are immediately programmed back into our one- and six-year program at that time. And so as a result of that, other things that happen is, as projects come to a close, projects like Benjamin Avenue, Michigan Avenue, is there is funding left in those projects that was not spent on that project. Those dollars likewise are also reprogrammed into the, into the one- and six-year program. And so in the one- and six-year program here this year, you'll see we actually added a one-point-five-million-dollar millon overlay into next year. And I'm looking for those right now. It'd be line item eighteen, one-point-five million programmed for millon overlay in twenty-four, twenty-five, and another million and a half programmed in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And that would just be an example of, again, looking at funding as it's coming in on an annual basis, wrapping up projects and reallocating those funds into our one- and six-year program.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. I just want to make mention of that specifically since streets and transportation infrastructure are typically major sources of top outlays within CIP, and that extra boost that is provided for within the next year. So it's about, it's primarily about matching need to resources within that plan. Thank you. Any other discussion on this resolution, council, before we move forward? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash fifty-four is adopted.
Item nineteen, we'll open this public hearing at the request of Mike and Carrie Whideran, to consider a zoning change from A agricultural district to R one, one- and two-family residential district on property addressed as thirty-four oh eight Anderson Street. And to kick off discussion here, we'll hear from Val.
And this is right next door to the one that we did probably about a month or so ago. And so they are doing the exact same thing, asking for the same reason. They want to build a single-family house. Ag has much larger setbacks, side and front, and it's about a half-acre lot. So R one zoning fits that size of lot, and so that's why they are requesting Ag to R one.
Okay, thank you, Val. Any questions on that? Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone who wishes to comment can do so now. Seeing and hearing no one, I will ask for a Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on September fourth, two thousand twenty-four, to consider a zoning change from A agricultural district to R one, one- and two-family residential district on property addressed as thirty-four oh eight Anderson Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a seven-to-zero vote.
Thank you. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item twenty, and ask for a motion to consider, ordinance number fifty-eight ninety-six, approving a zoning change from A to R one zoning designations on property addressed as thirty-four oh eight Anderson Street.
I'll offer consideration of ordinance number fifty-eight ninety-six.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on this, council?
Val, do you foresee a sidewalk waiver coming after, if this is approved, the zoning change is approved, where you see a sidewalk waiver coming for these individual homes?
Unless it was on the plat, I mean, we're not doing anything with the plat.
Okay.
So that kicks in. I mean, if the old Cedar Lake plat had the sidewalk note on it, then potentially, but otherwise, we're not doing anything with the plating.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? If not, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight ninety-six carries on first reading.
I'd make a motion to waive the second, suspend the rules and waive the second and third readings. Second.
Motion and second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight ninety-six carries on second and third.
Okay, that moves us to our regular agenda. And as we begin the regular agenda, I'm going to make a note here. Councilman Shane Clausen, our city council president, was hoping and intending to be here but got called away at the last minute for family emergency, so I just wanted to give explanation to that. Item twenty-one, I will look for a motion to consider approval of a limited English proficiency plan for the city of Norfolk as it relates to the needs of individuals with limited English language skills. As a note, this item was tabled at the September third city council meeting.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of a limited English proficiency plan.
First, we'll need a motion to remove it from the table.
I'll make a motion to remove it from the table. Second.
Motion and second to remove from, remove this item from the table. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of limited English proficiency plan. Second.
Okay, motion second. For some background on this, we will hear first from Jessica DeVorek, our city human resources director. Jessica?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. This evening, I, along with the assistance of the Nebraska Organizing Project members, are bringing forward the finalized Language Access Plan, so previously known as the Limited English Proficiency Plan. So together, we have been able to make the necessary modifications. Attached to the agenda packet is also the redline version of the original plan and what changes have been made. The purpose of this plan is to outline the city of Norfolk's efforts to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Acts of nineteen sixty-four and the executive order one-three-one-six-six. So Title IX in summary prohibits the discrimination on the basis of race, color, and national origin, which also includes limitations for citizens who may not be proficient with the English language. All citizens of our community must be able to access city services regardless of their language barriers. There are also grants and other federal awards included in the city's budget that require Title VI compliance, as well as evidence that the city is following the plan provided before you today. So a majority in this room should have interpretation devices. If you do not have one and you need one, please feel free to go back to the table in the entrance. Throughout the meeting, there will be different speakers using other languages, and we also have two interpreters here to provide simultaneous interpretation. So just please make sure your device is on, keep it on. If the speaker is speaking in a language you understand, you can take the headphones off or simply unplug the headphones. When the speaker is using a language you do not understand, please plug your headphones in or put them back on. You can adjust the volume, but please don't change the channel on the device. And if you're experiencing difficulties, members can assist out in the entrance. So without further ado, I'd like to give the Nebraska Organizing Project an opportunity to introduce themselves. They have some speakers, and they will provide more insight to the importance of this plan.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica.
Good evening. And please make sure your receiver is on channel three.
Buenas tardes y gracias a todos por estar aquí hoy. Y muchas gracias a los miembros del Consejo Municipal por incluirnos en la agenda de hoy. Mi nombre es Tania García Ángel. Vivo en el Distrito Cuatro. Soy supervisora del Departamento de Abogacía de Pacientes Multiculturales en Faith Regional Health Services. Mi puesto incluye facilitar servicios de interpretación y traducción y abogar por las mejores prácticas en cuanto al acceso lingüístico y el cuidado de pacientes. No estoy hablando hoy en representación de Faith Regional, sino como experta en el tema. Además de toda una vida interpretando para familiares y conocidos, tengo aproximadamente trece años de experiencia profesional como intérprete y traductora de español. Y he utilizado estas habilidades en diversos campos como seguros comerciales, medicina, tribunales, y entornos legales. Quiero presentar brevemente el proyecto de organización de Nebraska. El proyecto de organización de Nebraska es una organización emergente que cree en los habitantes rurales de Nebraska, que los intereses y preocupaciones comunes pueden crear un espacio común, y que juntos podemos construir un Nebraska rural al que los hijos de todos quieran volver. El proyecto de organización de Nebraska ha estado construyendo su primer capítulo local en Norfolk desde el 2021, y ha crecido a más de cien miembros y simpatizantes. Unimos a la comunidad local y empoderamos a las personas a través del conocimiento, la estrategia, y las relaciones para lograr un objetivo común. Valoramos la creación de un cambio positivo. Capacitamos a los miembros de la comunidad para crear el cambio que queremos ver. Si miran a su alrededor, podrán ver este cuantos de nuestros miembros y simpatizantes están aquí hoy porque todos llevamos esta calcomanía. Estamos aquí para hablar del acceso lingüístico y proponer un plan exhaustivo de acceso lingüístico. Durante el último año, hemos escuchado las historias de más de cien miembros de la comunidad a través de las conversaciones individuales y en grupo. Escuchamos muchas historias sobre los retos que enfrentan los habitantes de Norfolk, y un tema que surgió fue la dificultad a la que se enfrentan muchos de nuestros muchos de nuestros vecinos para acceder a los servicios de la ciudad porque dependen de un idioma distinto al inglés. El tema del acceso lingüístico fue elegido como el primero de muchos esfuerzos para lograr un cambio significativo en Norfolk. Pasamos los últimos 11 meses investigando, conversando con el personal municipal, los líderes electos, consultando a los expertos en el tema, consultando otros planes de acceso lingüístico, y escuchando las historias de los miembros de la comunidad. A partir de lo que descubrimos, elaboramos un plan para mejorar la asistencia lingüística en Norfolk. En colaboración con Jessica DeVorek, la directora de Recursos Humanos de la ciudad, elaboramos un informe de investigación que compartimos con el personal del consejo y concejales de la ciudad sobre nuestros hallazgos. Al igual que un plan exhaustivo de acceso lingüístico para mejorar el acceso lingüístico de forma ética en la ciudad. Utilizo la palabra ética porque la mejor práctica de la interpretación profesional requiere centrarse en los intereses tanto de los que reciben los servicios como los que los prestan. Existe la idea errónea de que la habilidad para hablar un idioma equivale a la habilidad de interpretación de un idioma. Un hablante nativo o instruido de español puede ser capaz de comunicar sus propias ideas, pero tener el vocabulario y las habilidades para tomar las palabras de otra persona y comunicarlas con el mismo significado a otra persona es una habilidad diferente. Más del 10% de los habitantes de Norfolk hablan un idioma distinto del inglés en casa. Actualmente, los residentes de Norfolk hablan más de 20 lenguas distintas al inglés, y de estas, las cinco más habladas son las de español, el karen, ucraniano, y el birmano, y el francés. Quizás se pregunten cómo podemos prestar servicios en tantos idiomas. La buena noticia es que el plan de acceso lingüístico propuesto reúne los servicios existentes y aporta una guía clara para prestar servicios en todas las lenguas utilizadas en nuestra comunidad. La ciudad de Norfolk está obligada por ley a tener un plan para servir a las personas que hablan un idioma distinto al inglés porque es beneficiario de fondos federales. En el 2015, Norfolk utilizó el plan de dominio limitado del inglés para cumplir con esta tarea, sin embargo, no contaba con las estrategias necesarias para su implementación, y ya no satisface las necesidades de nuestra comunidad. El plan propuesto esta tarde incluye la creación de un puesto de navegador lingüístico, encargado de supervisar la implementación del plan de acceso lingüístico, no solo garantizando su cumplimiento, sino también el crecimiento y desarrollo continuo de nuestra ciudad en cuanto al acceso lingüístico. Norfolk está comprometido a servir las, a las personas que viven aquí, y a convertirse en un líder en accesibilidad, en un, y en un lugar que todos podemos estar orgullosos de llamar nuestro hogar. Muchas gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you, Tania. Good evening.
Good evening, hi. My name is Marianne Rodriguez Hernandez, I live in Ward 1. I just wanted to share a little bit about my experience growing up in Norfolk. I moved here from Mexico and landed in Norfolk when I was about eight years old. My mom wanted us to have a better life and better opportunities like any other parent. I went to school at Norfolk Public Schools and learned English through the ELL program. There are a lot of pressures in moving to a new country. My mom did not have the same opportunities to learn English. This meant that I had to translate and interpret teacher conferences, fill out forms, order at restaurants, pay bills, doctor appointments, speaking to landlords, interacting with the city, police officers, or anything else that required to speak or write in English. I had to do that from the age of 11, and I still do that today. I remember a time when we received a warrant from my mom over a Junie B. Jones library book that was not returned. I remember the fear that she had when I had to try and explain to her that she needed to go to the police station and get her fingerprints and her picture taken. She had never even had a ticket before. She had questions that I couldn't answer, and as a child, I didn't understand the severity of the situation. Thankfully, the library had the book. My memories of my childhood are of me translating and interpreting for my family. I grew up as a child involved in many adult conversations and carrying the responsibility of explaining things that I didn't understand myself. Interpreting for my mom put her at a disadvantage when communicating with other adults in my life. When I would get in trouble at school, I was the one telling her what the teachers and the principal were saying. I don't know if any of you got in trouble growing up, but I definitely did not tell her everything they were saying. While it worked out for me, it was not fair for my mom. The US Department of Justice provides guidance for government entities providing language assistance services. They say interpretive competency requires more than self-identification as bilingual. Agencies should avoid using family members, children, friends, and untrained volunteers as interpreters because it is difficult to ensure that they interpret accurately and lack ethical conflicts. Children translating and interpreting for their families is not fair to adults, but it is definitely not fair for children. For instance, a child interpreting a police interaction is scary, intimidating, and it puts a lot, sorry, it puts a lot of pressure on that child. I feel like I had to grow up very quickly because I was having those adult conversations at a young age. My family had to rely on me to communicate complicated situations from my perspective as a child. The city of Norfolk having a comprehensive language access plan ensures that city staff, from the police, to firemen, to the administration, have the resources and tools they need to serve all Norfolk residents. I don't think any of you have gone through the challenges of not speaking the language that information is available in. So thank you for hearing a little bit about my experience and considering and voting to approve the language access plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Anika Ramirez, and I've had the pleasure of serving as a public librarian at our city library for the last seven years. And during this time, I've observed a growing need for enhanced language access to city services. Each week, our staff interacts with numerous patrons who speak a language other than English, and it's clear that improving our support for these individuals is necessary. I was thrilled to learn about the city's new communication skills incentive program for employees proficient in a second language. Although I've been learning Spanish for many years and can assist with most basic services at the library, my language skills do not qualify me for that program, but nevertheless, I want to commend the city for, for this initiative. It's a, it represents a meaningful step toward valuing and leveraging language skills among employees. For those of us in public-facing roles, providing high-quality customer service goes beyond just speaking a second language. It requires thorough training in language access policies, procedures, and the tools available, like language line. Each department in our city contributes to enhancing the quality of life for residents in Norfolk, and ongoing evaluation of our language assistance services is vital. This ensures that all employees are equipped to serve effectively without placing undue strain on bilingual staff, such as interpreting or translating for city departments that are outside of their scope of skill or proficiency. At the library, I've assisted patrons with a variety of needs, such as printing school enrollment forms for their children, faxing legal documents, and locating the Spanish edition of the Nebraska driver's manual. While a combination of Spanish, English, and Google Translate often gets the job done, I am committed to providing more than just good enough service. As local business owner Danny Orwa aptly noted, "When residents see that the city is making efforts to meet their needs, it builds trust and encourages greater engagement in civic matters, leading to a more cohesive community." I am inspired by my colleagues' dedication to service and see the proposed Language Access Plan as a powerful tool to strengthen our city's ability to promote public safety, enhance economic growth, and really drive overall quality of life. Thank you for considering this important issue, and I look forward to seeing the positive impact these efforts have on our community.
Thank you, Anika.
Buenas tardes, good evening everybody, my name is Leonor Fier. If that's not the most bilingual name you'll hear tonight, there it is. I work for Nebraska Children and Families Foundation, and I've been a resident of Norfolk since I graduated high school and moved here for the community college since 2004. A few months ago, I came before you when this first came up to approve the original plan, and I, I asked you to table it, to give us some time, because there were citizens in our community that were really interested in being a part of creating something better for our city. And today, I thank you for giving us that opportunity. I hope that when you look around this room today, you can see the efforts and the patience has paid off, and that you're able to see some of the faces that are most impacted by this. My dad is in this room today, he's a little bit more shy than I am, but he worked, or he served as a volunteer for the fire department a few years ago, he served for 11 years here for Norfolk, and then he had to serve 10 years in Newman Grove, my hometown. And I have to tell you that this means a lot to my dad. He served on the fire department with a personal commitment to try to answer as many calls as he could, oftentimes sacrificing a lot of time with his family, because he felt like he was one of the only ones that was able to go and be bilingual in case there was an emergency or families that spoke Spanish and didn't speak English were impacted by a fire or an emergency. And so this means a lot to him, and I thank you for giving my dad an opportunity to serve our city in a volunteer role. I'm also a child, an interpreter, that served as an interpreter when I was younger. I can't tell you the mental and emotional toll that takes on a kid to have to interpret adult conversations for family members, for parents, to feel like a resource above anything else to their community. I hold that honor, I love it, it's created who I am today, but I, if I can save any other child from having to do that, have been placed in situations they shouldn't be in, providing information that they shouldn't be giving, I, I want to be a part of that. My situation was in a library book, but instead it was sharing information about health. I had to share with my parents that I had cancer, and that's not easy to do. And I had to do it again three years later, explaining that my brother also had cancer. And I know that doesn't relate to city, it's more so healthcare, but those are just stories that impact people every single day. And when you have to interpret every little thing, from the water bill, from the power bill, from law enforcement showing up at your door for a tricket, for a ticket, or a traffic stop, or a library book, it takes a toll. And so I'm, I'm excited to live in a city that is looking at developing more welcoming, inclusive practices to help our non-English speakers feel welcome, feel like they can contribute, feel like their voice matters, and that you're here to listen to them. The most impactful piece of being a part of this work has honestly been seeing our community come together. We have members that have come together to support this issue, that have, that have nothing to gain from it, in all honesty, that they are not impacted directly by this, but they know that their neighbor is, they know that their child's best friend is. And to see them come together and say, "I might not be directly impacted by this, but I want, I want to create a better community for those around me," is huge. It's really great to see that positive commitment from community members. I think one of the proudest things is that we were able to come in front of you and not only highlight an issue, but provide solutions. That we were able to come to you and say, "Hey, we want to be a part of developing a plan, and we have people that want to do this." Not just coming to you and pointing out a problem without any real solution to bring forward. And so that has been probably the most impactful thing that I've witnessed throughout this whole process over the last year or so, and I hope that we continue to see positive change like that when community members come together for the greater good of our community. I just want to thank you, I, in advance, hopefully, of you approving this plan, and just thank you for being witness to using the interpretive devices. Might give you a little bit of a headache if this is your first time utilizing them, but they're a great tool, and I hope we get to see those in other spaces in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leonor. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. I'll just say, Jessica, before you add any more, I want to thank all of you for being here, for having the courage and concern to tell your stories. There's real value in that for us, I think, opening eyes to the need and challenge in our community and the necessity to have a plan like this in place, so thank you very much. Oftentimes, I think if we are not forced, as leaders up here, to think about the world through different eyes, to look at the world and hear the world through different eyes and ears, we don't do it. But it is on us, as leaders of an entire community, to make sure that we continue to grow a healthy, vibrant place for all, and that everybody has access to the language services they need to access public services, so. Jessica, did you want to, at this point in time, talk to us a little bit about what this, what this plan constitutes? What's in the plan? What does this mean for us as a city?
So just at a, kind of a high level, I guess, is the plan has all the compliance elements, it did before, but it has an action plan and action steps of how we achieve those goals. So part of that, you know, within the HR department, as I've started, my position is primarily responsible for making sure we're in compliance, but how we operationalize that is more than just what I can handle, and so having, having an HR team and primarily within one job description, that we need to have someone who likely has the ability, they have bilingual skills, they can provide and find the tools that are necessary, whether it's public safety, whether it's our admin building, these interpretation devices, we don't even own that within the city, but how do we, how do we operationalize this with, with everything that we do so that there is access to individuals, citizens of our city? So that's really high level, is how, you know, implementing a job description and having some essential functions to assist with this plan and carrying it out, rather than just having a document published on our website. So that's, that's really, in a nutshell, what we're doing or trying to achieve today. Are there other questions from city council members? Well, I want to thank the Nebraska Organizing Project for all their efforts, and those that provided testimony and information, and I want to thank them for their partnership and their patience as we have had to table this a few times. So with that, I would like to request that the council approve the current plan as provided so we can publish it accordingly and continue the next steps planning based on the action items that are listed in it.
I want to make a comment about, about awareness. If you guys, so, I got postcards over the weekend, they, I read every one of them, they're great, and for you guys that came out tonight to support this, thank you for making me, as an individual, more aware of the challenges that I don't see because I don't have those challenges, but it made my eyes like this big, so. Thank you for everybody who did show up and sent the postcards that, that I actually shared with my family, so, thank you guys.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you, Jessica. Well said, councilman, I want to echo that, I, even though I'm not officially a member of the council, I got those postcards too. And you're exactly right, they were eye-opening, and I wanted to note one statistic that they included, that the estimate is 13% of Norfolkans currently speak a primary language other than English, which is more than I would have thought, and a number that we should all take to heart, so. The, the postcards, the fact that you're here tonight, the fact that you worked with city staff, to not only outline a challenge, but as Leonor said, provide solutions, it means a lot. That is constructive citizen engagement, positive citizen engagement in building a better community. Thank you very much, thank you all. Any other discussion, council? Any other discussion, council?
The only other thing before you vote, we will look for one more motion to substitute. So, what was tabled and what's actually up for consideration now is the original limited English proficiency plan that was brought this spring. That's what's been tabled. And so, I would ask for a motion to substitute that with the more robust plan that's been put together, the Language Access Plan.
So, I just need to make a motion to?
Yeah, to substitute.
Okay. I'll make a motion to substitute the original plan that we tabled.
Okay. Motion, is this in the form of an amendment or a substitution?
Yeah, yeah, it's a substitution, so amendment, yeah, and then we'll go back to the original.
Okay. Motion to amend the existing plan before us to substitute to an enhanced plan that was discussed tonight. Motion in second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries. And then we'll move back to our original motion for consideration.
Okay. Now, the enhanced plan is officially on the table, so any further discussion on that? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Great. Again, thank you very much for being here. Okay, item 22 on the regular agenda. I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5897 approving the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 appropriations, approving the fiscal year 2024 to '25 proprietary budget, and approving the strategic plan.
I'll offer consideration of ordinance number 5897.
Second.
Motion in second, and you're all in for a treat because this is our city budget. And you get to hear all about it. Actually, we had a budget hearing last week in which the city administrator provided a detailed accounting of the budget, but we will, for public record, provide an overview, a quick summary of the budget, and I'll hand that over to Andy Colvin and then Randy Gates, our city finance officer, to do that.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. So, I'm not going to go through the whole presentation again, but I am going to offer a few highlights of the budget. But I will say that this budget is the result of many, many hours of work from staff, from all divisions, and particularly our finance staff, that worked very hard to put this together. There's a lot of information in this. This is not something that comes together overnight. So, really, I think it's fair to say that not one city staff person knows everything about this budget, and that's why you have different divisions that would come together to talk about specific things, which is why we have several staff here tonight that can hopefully answer any questions you might have for this. So, with that, Val's going to help me out with the presentation here. Val, if you want to go to slide two, I'll just run through a few of the highlights for this current budget. The total citywide budget for '24-'25 increases 4.2% or $5.6 million. That's primarily due to debt issuance for the West Collector Well, Water Tank, and the Water Treatment Plant improvements. There's a significant amount of infrastructure improvements that we have built into this budget this year. And also, then, the fiscal year '24-'25 general fund budget increases 5.28% due primarily to strong sales tax proceeds. The city's property tax asking remains the same as fiscal year '24, resulting in a 2.20 cent property tax levy reduction. So, again, we did leave our property tax asking the same going into this coming fiscal year that we did the current one. We have built in a 2.5% cost of living adjustment for city employees. With regard to our utility rates, we have an 8% industrial sewer rate increase and a 3.5% residential and commercial sewer rate increase. And water rates will increase 6.25%, and this is to service the debt that we will need for the improvements that we mentioned, and I'll go through here right below. We're going to continue the $10.8 million WPC, which is a water pollution control plant, the grit facility and plant upgrades. We'll begin construction on $18.5 million West Collector Well, Water Tank, and Treatment Plant upgrades. And also, this has been an ongoing goal of the council for several years, that this budget nearly restores a 16% general fund balance, which has been an ongoing council goal for several years, as I mentioned. So, this fund balance this year is budgeted to reach 15.9% at the end of the fiscal year '25. And I do want to touch on a couple of things, Val. If you want to go down to slide five. So, at the last meeting, we did have some questions about the city's debt, and I've also had some questions from elected officials since then. So, I wanted to provide this slide, which, again, the edited slide with this slide included will be added to our city website. So, just to go through, there's a pie chart, I guess is probably the easiest one to point to there in the lower right-hand corner. But you'll see that majority of the city's overall debt, in comparison to all of the other components of this, would be for chaff bonds. And so, the city chaff bonds, which is our highway funds funded solely from the city, the gas tax that the city receives from the state of Nebraska. And if we want to go through individual projects that that all includes, we can certainly do that. But obviously, Benjamin Avenue project was a big one there, as well as Michigan Avenue. And we did include the bridge at first, the First Street Bridge, as well as the roundabout is included in this overall project as well. So, I want to just point that out, and that is not general fund debt. That is not property tax debt. That is city highway allocation fund bonds. You'll move over. We'll just go through here. We have 12% in the green. That's special assessment bonds, so those are bonds that are issued if there's a development taking place, and the developer is going to create water districts, sewer districts, paving districts, and those are all paid. The debt service on that is paid by, you know, if they sell a lot, or the owner will pay that assessment to pay for that. That is not spread among the rest of the community, only within that particular development. We've got 11%, and that's for the solid waste bonds. So, the transfer station and our solid waste division has had several improvements over the last few years. We have 16% for the sewer bonds. 10% of that is also for public safety bonds. The public safety bonds are in flood control, so the orange and the blue are property tax-funded bonds. So, that is something the city has done for many years, is issue debt, which is public safety tax anticipation bonds, and also then we have some for flood control as well. So, I just wanted to provide this as just kind of an overview. We can go into as much detail as you like. Sheila and Randy are both here to help walk through any details you might want to know for that. But I did want to point that out as a matter of clarification, just generally informing the council and public. And I guess with that, as I said, staff's here. We'll be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions from the council on that? Or discussion? That breakdown is helpful, Andy, that big chunk, obviously, 46% for roads through chaff bonds. We use a lot of acronyms here, but for people who aren't familiar with the language we throw around here, chaff is city highway allocation funds, right? And explain a little bit the origin of those, where those come from.
So, Steve might be able to provide more detail on that, but I believe that is just the gas taxes collected. So, the state collects gas tax from fuel sales in Norfolk, and then it's a calculation that's provided by the miles of streets that you have, Steve. Is that what it's based on, or is it a share? Maybe you can provide clarification on that.
Correct. 50% of the allocation's based on population of the community. 30% is based on vehicle licenses or vehicle registrations, and then 20% is based on the lane miles of streets.
Thank you.
I would also note, I don't have the exact number, but on big projects, we're only allowed to kind of bank four years in chaff. So, on big projects, we're forced to bond by state statutes. So, something like Benjamin Avenue, up there in the, you know, above $10 million, we couldn't really save enough.
Forced and practically have to bond for those big-ticket items, which, as Andy indicated, break down in recent years to Benjamin Avenue, Michigan, the First Street improvements, which, again, the debt issued from there is paid through this city highway allocation fund. And by my math, 73% of existing debt is from chaff, roads, and utilities, those utility funds. The debt for those major infrastructure improvements that had to be taken on in order to provide reasonable services will be paid through those utility funds. Then 27%, the remaining, as you noted, Andy, public safety, primarily flood control, and then some left for special assessments, accounting for growth.
Yeah, and I also want to point out, too, that if you look on the chart, you'll see a couple of star marks. I should probably mention those. So, if you look at the notes at the bottom, there's about $4.5 million budgeted for chaff bonds, and that's for community decided street repairs. Here in the last year's budget, the city council did want to put more money towards street improvements, which is something the council has discretion to do. Now, that was used through a combination of general fund that we moved over to chaff, as well as some council priority dollars, and that was to help boost some community decided street repairs. Now, that's something that the council would have to take separate action on in order to do that. So, those are not bonds that have been issued or that we're paying debt on, or that we even will necessarily pay debt on. That is something the council will ultimately have to approve as a separate action, but we did include it in here with a note. And then the $800,000 for unidentified assessment districts, that's really only dependent on if districts are identified and built out this coming year, which oftentimes are unknown for us, but we try to anticipate some of those.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? There was a public hearing on all this last week, but if there's any public comments wished to be given tonight, we can do that as well. Okay. Any further discussion, council, prior to voting? I just want to thank the staff involved in putting the city budget together, and that's almost all the administrative department heads. This is a complex, complicated process with a lot of moving parts, but I think we can all be happy with the outcome. Keeping property taxes, the property tax asking, as Andy indicated, the same as last year, allowing for a more than two-cent decrease in levy, which is the highest decrease in recent history. Maintaining, I think this is worth noting, too, maintaining that 16% general fund reserve, which has been a priority of the council, that rainy day fund for several years now, and then dedicating resources to major infrastructure projects in coming years to help modernize and update water systems capacity to serve citizens and accommodate growth. So, thank you to staff for the work involved in putting this budget together. If there's nothing further, council, I would ask for a short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, adopting the budget statement to be termed the Annual Appropriation Bill, appropriating sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, adopting the proprietary budget statement, adopting the strategic plan, providing perseverance, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. With that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5897 carries on first reading.
And once we want to have a special council meeting, we need to pass these ordinance on second and third.
Thank you for that note, Randy.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass on second and third.
Second.
Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5897 carries on second and third.
All right. Item 23, we'd look for a motion to consider resolution number 2024-55 approving the additional 1% increase in restricted fund authority allowed upon the affirmative vote of at least 75% of the council.
I'll offer for consideration Resolution number 2024-55.
Second.
Motion in second, and for some background on what this is, Randy Gates, our city finance officer, please.
This is something we've done every year since the lead law passed back in, I think it was the mid-'90s or late-'90s. It's probably somewhat superfluous this year or since. During the special session, they did away with the current lead. It's in effect for this year, but they're replacing it next year with a lead on property tax. It's still provided for in the budget forms, and if something unforeseen would happen, it doesn't hurt to have that extra authority. It doesn't impact our taxes or budget in any way this year. We got way more restricted funds authority than we need. This will give us another $151,000 that we probably don't need because it'll go away, but it doesn't hurt anything to pass that, and if something unforeseen would happen, we'd have that.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Any questions on that? Discussion or public input? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2024-55 is adopted.
Item 24 would entertain a motion to consider Resolution number 2024-56 approving the property tax requests for fiscal year 2024-25 in amounts different than fiscal year '23 to '24.
I'll offer for consideration Resolution 2024-56.
Motion in second. Again, Randy, some background on this, please.
This is a requirement of statutes that anytime your property tax changes, whether it be up or down from the prior year, your property tax asking, you got a hold of hearing, which we did at the last meeting, and then approved that change from the prior year's property tax request. As Andy mentioned, we're keeping the general fund and debt service fund property tax requests the same, no change to those. But the vehicle parking district increased their property tax $28,267. Went from $105,121 last year to $133,388 this year. They had a huge increase in assessed value, an increase of $11.8 million or well over 39% from the prior year's valuation. And this increase in assessed value allows Vehicle Parking District Board to decrease what they're asking for, for a levy rate from 35 cents last year, which is the maximum allowed by law, which is what they normally have levied, to 31.8843 cents this year. Even with that levy rate decrease because of the substantial increase in assessed value, their taxes do go up a little over $28,000, and this resolution would approve that increase in property tax requests for Vehicle Parking District.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions or discussion on that? Okay, hearing and seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2024-56 is adopted.
Item 25 would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5898 approving the fiscal year '24 to '25 classification and pay plan.
I'll offer for consideration of ordinance number 5859, 5898.
Second.
Motion in second. Randy, one more person, background on this, please.
This is the formal action to approve the pay plan that isn't contained within the '24-'25 budget. twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So this just actually puts that into place.
Okay, one more formality with the budget. Any questions on this or discussion? Okay, hearing seeing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, pissing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range, repealing ordinance number fifty-eight fifty, providing for publication in pamphlet form and when this ordinance shall take effect.
With that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight ninety-eight carries on first reading.
And once again, this is another item that unless we want to have a special council meeting, we should approve on three readings because it goes into effect with our new budget year on October first.
Seeing the opposition, I'll go ahead and ask, do we suspend the rules of second and third on ordinance fifty-eight ninety-eight?
I'll second that.
Motion and second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight ninety-eight carries on second and third.
Okay, item twenty-six, we'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight ninety-three approving the Foundry Apartment Complex final planned development. This ordinance passed on first reading at the August nineteenth council meeting and on second reading at the September third council meeting. So we are on final reading here, which means no discussion. So with that, do we need short title here first? Okay, go ahead, short title, please.
No, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't get a motion.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance fifty-eight ninety-three.
Second.
Okay, motion second. And now, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, with that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight ninety-three carries on third reading.
Item twenty-seven, we'd look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-two-four dash fifty-seven approving an amendment to the subdivision agreement with Blackberry Heights Second Edition to amend the terms of the original agreement to change the sidewalk installation requirements.
I'll offer for consideration resolution number twenty-two-four dash fifty-seven.
Second.
Motion and second. These next few items on the agenda are a series of sidewalk-related matters, and we'll hear from Steve and/or Danny to give us some background on these.
Mayor and council, as mayor said, the next several items, and I'll read those items off, and I realize we'll address them one at a time, but twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty are all related to the solution that is item thirty-one, the sidewalk waiver request on North Twenty-seventh. So we'll start with, we'll start with number twenty-seven, and I'll describe here the solution that's before you. So twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine are the subdivisions of Blackberry Heights. Item twenty-seven specifically is Blackberry Heights Second Edition. What this amendment to the subdivision agreement does is it requires, or in the existing subdivision agreement, there is an eight-foot trail being constructed along the north side of Sheridan, and the current subdivision indicates that the city will reimburse the developer for the three-foot portion of the trail above and beyond the five-foot required for sidewalk. What this amendment will do is it states in here that the developer will be required to build the eight-foot trail without reimbursement, and in exchange, the developer is not required to build out any sidewalk adjacent to the west side of Twenty-Fifth Street. That's the summary. So as we move through twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, and then thirty, ultimately then we would be voting down item thirty-one, which is the waiver. So the waiver would go away and be replaced with these four items. Any questions? Do you want me to go into some more detail around that, or any more questions on that? So again, if there's no questions, we can go through them one at a time here.
Steve, it may go without saying, but given the fact that they're before us, but this compromise of sorts is a satisfactory resolution to city staff?
It is. So what we would then contemplate is, as we engage in the design for the reconstruction there of Twenty-Fifth Street, and we get up into that area, the sidewalk there would be the cost of that sidewalk going somewhat north of Sheridan, and that first lot south of Sheridan on the west side, the city would cover those costs as a part of the reconstruction of Twenty-Fifth.
Any further questions or discussion on this?
Steve, the cost difference between the two, did you figure out roughly what that is?
I mean, it's not a straight exchange, the three-foot, I would say it's, we're exchanging about thirty-five hundred feet or so of eight-foot trail for about forty-two hundred feet of five-foot sidewalk. Now, that includes area of five-foot sidewalk that's, where there's no development right now.
Before, you thought it'd be around $7,000 was the difference? I didn't know.
That's about what that difference is, yes.
Who originally recommended the eight-foot sidewalk? Where did that come from in the redevelopment?
That's part of our, so the north side of Sheridan is part of our master trail plan, so we have a trail that extends all the way out to Thirty-seventh Street ultimately up there.
Okay. Any other discussion or comment on this? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty-two-four dash fifty-seven is adopted.
Item twenty-eight, we'd look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-two-four dash fifty-eight approving, excuse me, an amendment to the subdivision agreement with Blackberry Heights Third Edition to amend the terms of the original agreement to change the sidewalk installation requirements.
I'll offer for consideration resolution number twenty-two-four dash fifty-eight.
Second.
Motion second. Steve, any further to say on these next few items?
No, this would be essentially the same resolution, except it is for Blackberry Heights Third Edition. And again, the developer would be responsible for building out any portion of the eight-foot sidewalk north of Sheridan, and in exchange, the city would consume the cost of any sidewalk on the west side of Twenty-Fifth, north of Sheridan or south of Sheridan.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Steve, I do have just a general question on that. So it's eight-foot sidewalk, but the ramp, if you will, down to the street from the sidewalk is currently at a five-foot width. Would that increase to an eight-foot?
As we would build that out, that should be an eight-foot. That is correct.
And that's part of the agreement?
Yes.
Anything further?
I have one question. Originally, when this was proposed...
Can you toss your name, sir, please?
We all know it, but it's David Janzma, I'm sorry. I have one question. When this was originally proposed, you basically said this was a handshake agreement. Is this going to be a contract, or will it be a handshake agreement?
These resolutions that are being passed this evening are...
No, you said the developer, and you had reached a handshake agreement where they would do the eight-foot when you guys redid Twenty-Fifth Street. The city would pay for the sidewalk. Is it going to be a contract or a handshake agreement?
This is a contract. This is...
That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, if not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty-two-four dash fifty-eight is adopted.
Item twenty-nine, we'd look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-two-four dash fifty-nine approving an amendment to the subdivision agreement with Blackberry Town Home Subdivision to amend the terms of the original agreement to change the sidewalk installation requirements.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number twenty-four, number twenty-two-four fifty-nine.
Second.
Motion second. Any further background here, Steve?
Mayor and council, this, we're on twenty-nine, correct?
Twenty-nine.
This is the Blackberry Town Home Subdivision, and again, it's the same discussion. The developer will build out the eight-foot trail on the north side of Sheridan, and in exchange, the city would construct any sidewalk on the west side of North Twenty-Fifth Street.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty-two-four dash fifty-nine is adopted.
Item thirty, we'd look for a motion to consider approval of agreement with Granville Custom Homes Incorporated and Nebraska Corporation to amend sidewalk installation requirements in the Blackberry Town Home Subdivision and Blackberry Heights Third Edition, providing for an eight-foot sidewalk along the north side of Sheridan Drive.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. I think we all have the concept here. Any questions or discussion?
This is slightly different, so I'll just run through it. So this happens to be the unplatted area between Blackberry's Second Edition and Third Edition. There's a short section in there, I don't know, about maybe two-hundred-and-fifty feet. So since that is unplatted, not part of an existing subdivision, this is creating a requirement along that unplatted area that Granville would be responsible for construction of that eight-foot, the eight-foot trail. And then, when that does get subdivided, it has no adjacency to Twenty-Fifth, but we are requiring him to build out that trail, that full length of Sheridan.
So in this contract that you have, what if he sells this property? Would that, would the new owner be required to do the same?
Danny might want to answer that. Go ahead.
So my answer to that would be that, so this is filed against the county because these are amendments to the subdivision agreements that were already put in place. Because of the fact that what was contemplated in the original agreements is now being changed, I guess what we are doing is requiring Granville Mr. Rammakers to pay for this, so we contemplate that he's going to do that, especially according to the timeline here, we're talking about five years being the latest. If he were to sell those, I think that would be a conversation between the new buyer and Mr. Rammakers, just because these documents will be discoverable at the county, at the registrar's office.
And at the time that does, at the time that does get subdivided, we would write that into that subdivision agreement that the developer is responsible for that.
Any further questions or discussion?
So this is not on the plat, then? This agreement will not be on the plat?
This, yeah, just this last one. This last one is, it's the unplatted, so Blackberry, I don't know exactly what it is, eighty acres up there. So these first three are the first three plats coming in off of Sheridan or off of Twenty-Fifth Street, but there is a section between Twenty-Fifth and, or, I'm sorry, there's a section between the Second Edition and the Third Edition that's unplatted. He skipped a couple hundred feet there. And we could bring up a map. We have a, there is an exhibit, if you wanted to bring that up.
I will point out, too, just to make it clear, these agreements all run with the land, so essentially, even if ownership is transferred, it will not be a city obligation as far as the Sheridan, the trail is concerned.
area, and there would be, there will be a street that continues north there, that would be a four-legged intersection. And so as that would get platted out, whether that is Blackberry or Granville Custom Homes or, you know, that gets sold off to another developer, we would write into that subdivision agreement that they're responsible for the eight-foot trail.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing a hearing, no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item thirty-one, we'd entertain a motion to consider resolution twenty-two-four dash forty-eight approving a sidewalk waiver requested by Granville Custom Homes Incorporated, Janet Anderson, and David and Cindy Christopherson for properties located at 2,200 North Twenty-Sixth Street, 2,206 through 2,218, North Twenty-Sixth Street, and Outlet C. This item was tabled at the August nineteenth council meeting and at the September third council meeting. So we'd need a motion to remove from the table.
I'll make a motion to remove from the table.
Second.
Motion and second to remove from the table, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
They need a motion for the underlying resolution.
Make a motion for consideration of resolution twenty-two-four dash forty-eight.
Second.
Motion second. Steve, anything you want to add here, please?
Yeah, so with the passing of the last four items, this resolution would need to be, would need to fail.
Just to be clear, the previous... Just to be clear, the previous motions that we did actually replaced the need for a waiver, correct?
Correct.
In other words, this should go down in flames. Yeah. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in opposition. Resolution twenty-two-four dash forty-eight fails.
All right, we are through the sidewalk parade. Item thirty-two would look for a motion to consider approval of a request for city council priority funds to contract with McLean and Company for an employee climate survey for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
I'll offer consideration of approval of request for council priority dollars.
Second.
Motion and second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Andy Colvin, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, I bring this item to you tonight, actually Jessica and I both do. This is something that we've talked about here over the last couple months, probably at least, and how we can better, I guess, get a feeling for how our employees and all staff across all divisions are feeling about their jobs, work environment, the city, and I think it, from my perspective, wanting to know really how we can help them do their jobs better and enjoy their jobs more so. So this is a survey. I don't, I've never participated in a survey like this. I think Jessica's worked with Mc... I don't, I've never participated in a survey like this. I think Jessica's worked with McLean and, and company at the college. They've done, they've worked with McLean on this very same thing. So she may be able to answer some detailed questions if you have on that survey for this. But my understanding is that it's going to take a few months to help put this together. And they do some meetings, they do some things to help prep this. So I wouldn't anticipate this rolling out tomorrow. I mean, this is something that will be in, in a few months to try to get before this goes out to staff. There will be education, there will be discussions, so everybody knows what this, what this is. But really, this is us wanting to get approval to use council priority funds. This is not something we have budgeted. But we do budget to spend all council priority funds every year. So this is some flexibility the council does have to allocate some of those funds to this. I don't think it'll, it'll hit 25,000, but I wanted to have a little bit of wiggle room in there, just in case there's some extra services or something on top of that that we could add as we go along with this conversation. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions?
I really don't have any questions, but I think this is a, this is a great thing as our city employees are our single greatest asset we have. So knowing where they lie with their workload or their environment, I think this is a, this is, this is a great thing to do.
Well said. Councilman, any other comments or discussion on this? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 33 would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5899 amending section 24-165 of the city code to update the hours of parking restrictions in the downtown area.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number 5899. Second.
Motion in second. And for some background on this, we'll look to Danny, our city attorney.
Thank you. Section 24-165 of the city code currently restricts parking between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM in the 100 blocks of South Fifth Street and South Sixth Street and on portions of Norfolk Avenue between Second Street and Fifth Street. These parking restrictions appear to have been put in place around the year 2000 as a result of complaints received about people hanging out in those areas and as part of an anti-cruisering, loitering, and loitering strategy in downtown Norfolk. Staff has been directed to prepare this ordinance, changing the hours of parking restrictions in those areas to 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM for consistency with other restrictions in the downtown area.
Thank you, Danny. I know how old some of you guys are. I know you remember cruising downtown Norfolk. Any, any questions or discussion about this?
It just makes sense to clean it up and make it consistent.
Yeah, I think that's the point here. So there was a, basically in layman's terms, there are portions of downtown where the parking restriction hours are different from the rest of the downtown. And that was just a, a fairly small area, correct?
Yes, there's, there was a couple streets downtown where side streets were on the north side of Norfolk Avenue. If you're on that street, the curfew begins at 11:00 and on the south side, it was 2:00 AM or, or something like that. So we had a lot of inconsistency, which was difficult for enforcement and for understanding by citizens and residents downtown.
And Mayor, I'd like to make another comment on this. It's just interesting because the reason this is brought up tonight is because somebody actually contacted us about it. You know, it's, it's one of those things where we didn't necessarily go proactive with it, but it was a reaction to a, a citizen who said, why is this inconsistent? Shouldn't these be the same? So it's just one of those cases where if you do have a concern or an issue, you know, you, you can make a difference and you can make a, make a call. And, and this is a prime example of that.
Yeah. Important to note that. Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, if not, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section 24-165 of the official city code to update the hours of parking restrictions in the downtown area to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
With that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5899 carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and waive this on the second and third reading.
Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5899 carries on second and third.
Okay, item 34 would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number seven with United Contractors Incorporated for the First Street Bridge and Instream Improvements Project resulting in a net decrease of $38,221.75.
I'll make a motion for the approval of change order number seven with United Contractors.
Motion in second. Steve, if you could give us some background on this, please.
Mayor and Council, before you today are several line items of the contract for First Street and Johnson Park. As we're wrapping that up, we're kind of just finalizing construct, as constructed quantities. So you'll see quite a list of, of quantities there. They're subdivided up into multiple groups, Group A through Group L. There is, I would point out on here that on Group I, which is on page two of three of the, of the itemized list, under Group I, we are not adjusting at this time any quantities for line item I six through I 38. We started the construction kind of down on the very southeast end, Structure Eight, and built, built the project north. And that is the same way that we are finalizing quantities. So as you see, the, the remaining quantities, quantities I 39 through I 86 there are essentially final, final quantities. The remaining groups, Groups A through, through L there, again, these are areas that we feel pretty confident in the final quantities. And so we're presenting them for, as part of this change order. We anticipate there would be probably one more change order that is projected to be a fairly substantial negative change order. And that could be the final change order, and that could be presented sometime in October or early November, I would expect. But if there's a specific question on, on one of the items, I'd be, I'd be happy to, to answer that. Overall, it's a negative change order of $38,221.75.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions?
You know, I do have a question on, on page 122. The second line from the top actually is a hydroseed and fertilizer. Are we, are we still in, in need of that hydroseed?
Which, which item are you on, Councilman?
I'm on page 122. Item 10, under Group F. I just didn't know with the upcoming item.
So we, we are adjusting that, that, that is an as-built quantity. And we are removing at this time that, this change order removes 4,400... Hang on. We'll take one look here.
Nate Powell, excuse me. Nate Powell, First Market Director. I don't know if that, if that's the hydroseeding that we did, Steve, in the park already.
You see the item number on that? Is it up here? No. Where was that again? F... Point it out to me again, Danny?
Right here.
There we are.
Patrick's here.
F10.
We hydroceded to the, to the west of First Street and also along the river.
Yeah. So this, this is, this is an area over by, over by Dollar General. It's back behind Dollar General there. It's, it's actually in, in... So we're, we had to increase the quantity there. It's very, very steep back there behind Dollar General. And as, as a function of the construction down in there and some of the, some of the way the water was moving up against that bank, we were getting some erosion into that bank. So we actually dropped some, some riprap down along that bank and then hydroceded that. And the option there was to mat, to, to do a mat and, and pin it. And that was going to run us about $9 and up in that $9.50 range. So this was about half the cost to do this add versus an alternate solution. But that's what this is.
Thank you, Steve. Any further questions?
Correct. And as, as Danny kind of pointed out here, number six, we were, we're actually, we got a $17,000 deduct there. So we did have erosion at for the project for some of those, those steeper slopes and bankment areas. But this didn't, to do that, we still had to get in there and seed it or hydroseed it and then add the mat to it. And so hydroseeding and fertilizing was, was going to be cheaper overall. So we have a, a kind of a deduct here as well as an add.
Any further questions or comments on this?
Line item questions?
Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 35 would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with Mueller sprinklers for the Johnson Park irrigation project resulting in a net increase of $71,418.
I'll offer for consideration of approval change order number one.
Second.
Motion in second. And Steve, are you taking this one or Nate? Okay.
I'll take this and Nathan, Nathan can probably join. He may, may want to join me to answer questions. Mayor and Council, what we're proposing here is to sod versus seed the bulk of the park, starting at the very south end, south of the river, and sod that and sod north all the way up into the amphitheater structure as, as well as kind of around the slopes over by the restroom and then potentially up into the area around the concession stand, the, the sports, sports court facility. We are not proposing to sod the areas over around the playground area or the far northwest corner. Those areas are still just intended to be seeded. Our seeding, our seeding price is, I think it's 21 cents, 21, 21 and a half cents a square foot. The sod price here is $38, or 30, 38, 38 and a half cents a square foot. So there is, you know, there, this is an overall and add to the project. Due to the delivery of the project and the delayed delivery of the project, we are proposing here that by sodding it, we can open up the project and make it available to the public much sooner in that lower, that lower area versus seeding it. That would probably take the bulk of this, this fall to get that established and then even some more establishment period next spring. So the cost here, the extra cost, we feel is, is warranted in order to get the project opened up to the public. I would also indicate that kind of wrapped around that delayed opening of the park, this would be one of the items that we take to the table as part of our conversation with the, with the council and the, and the contractor when we start deliberating liquidated damages. The, the delayed delivery of the project, this certainly falls under a legitimate cost associated with liquidated damages. And I, I'm pretty confident that we would be recovering the additional cost over the 21 and a half cents for seeding.
Thank you, Steve. Nate, anything to add to that?
I don't have anything to add. I mean, it will help out with erosion and not leaving that ground exposed all throughout the winter. That's what our main concern is.
Any questions or comments on this? And Steve, just, you had mentioned you expect another change order as a net decrease coming forward, so within the overall budget of Johnson Park.
Correct. This is...
Regardless of liquidated, liquidated damages.
Yeah, we have, we are, this is, this is, currently we have this projected into our expenses within the project. This is not increasing, this will not require any additional funding in, in the project to accomplish this. The other add in here is the terrace. And, and on this particular document, the cells were not merged. And so it, it does not show there. At least on page two of three, on page three of three, the cells were merged appropriately. So line item two is the irrigation of the terrace on the east side of First Street from Nebraska Avenue, north to Prospect. So that area of the terrace, I can't remember how wide that is, 10 feet wide probably. That area was not part of the original irrigation plan that was bid out. And so that, that additional $5,968 is the additional irrigation for that terrace area.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this? If none, short title, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's just approval. I'm sorry. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 36 would look for a motion to consider approval of ordinance number 5900 amending section 2-5 of the official city code to update water rates and wastewater treatment rates.
I'll offer for consideration approval of ordinance number 5900.
Motion second. For background on this, once again, Steve, please.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, in, in the budget that was just presented by, by the city administrator, he mentioned the, the fee increases for water, water and sewer. That is six and a quarter percent increase in water rates for all users, residential, commercial, and industrial. On the sewer, it is an eight percent increase for industrial sewer rates, a three and a half percent increase in residential and commercial sewer rates, as well the eight percent for the industrial rates. It also is inclusive of the industrial loading. So that's our BOD, our total suspended solid, and our nitrogen rates. So those also go up eight percent.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions or comments on this? Discussion?
Jim McKenzie, I was just wondering if you could explain or talk about in the future, I know we've had a couple 6.25% increases. I'm not sure how many we've had consecutively. What are you looking at down the road? What are you looking at down the road?
Sure. Right now, I mean, I've got our water model up here, Jim. I just need to, let's see here, pick that one up. So right now in our water mo, in the water model, we're projecting six and a quarter for twenty-four, uh, which was last year, six and a quarter fiscal year twenty-five. We have another year of six and a quarter for fiscal year twenty-six and then it drops down to five. I would expect around twenty-nine or twenty-nine-ish, we'll probably be back down around that four percent.
So six and a quarter through?
Six and a quarter through fiscal year twenty-six and then we'll, then we ratchet down over a couple of years to four.
So five percent for twenty-seven, twenty-eight and then four percent for twenty-nine?
Yeah.
And then four percent going forward through that?
That's, that's what I would expect to see. I think, I can't remember, I believe our average or long-term average is about three point nine four. I remember right. So, I mean, it's not that we couldn't go below that, but we'll just have to see that when we get there. I don't see us going much below three, like, three to three and a half.
Do we know where that puts our water rates aggregate? I mean, when you start adding those together when we get up to twenty-eight, twenty-nine, where are we at in aggregate and how does that compare to other cities?
Well, I don't know what other cities are anticipating over the next four or five years for water rates. So that's, that's a real hard question to answer. But yes, it's very easy for us to put, put those to numbers and, and, and look at those rates.
Okay. I mean, it looks like we're looking at a, I don't know, forty percent increase over the next five, six years, oh, including the twenty-four one, I guess.
I mean, if I was to say the average was four, you know, you're looking at a two and a quarter percent over four years, it would be above the average, um, to cover some of these capital expenses that we're going to be going through. As usage changes, um, and as we build out, we tend to be building out more homes that are irrigating, so there's a higher usage there than the average would show, sorta. So as that build out goes and there's more usage, more revenue coming in, that could offset some of those, some of those rate increases a little bit. Industrial growth, that could also pull those back a little bit. If it's a heavy user type, type industry, but it, it's, you know, the, the forecast we have, that this model takes the CIP, that ten-year CIP, that ten-year CIP goes into this model, uh, we have some ability to model even beyond that. So as we're looking at a twenty-year water study, uh, twenty-year sewer study, and we see some big capital needs out there, we can put those in here as well. But it gets, it gets tougher to look much beyond five, you know, anything beyond five years is a little questionable.
Okay.
So I would say, you know, that six and a quarter through fiscal year twenty-six, ratcheting down to five percent probably for a couple of years and, and then four percent or something, it could be something less than four.
Okay. Okay. I mean, that does get fairly substantial, man. You're looking at a forty to fifty percent increase over six years, so that's significant. So, thank you.
And we are also engaged, as, as we brought the Waterworth model on, um, doing cost of service analysis, just to understand where our costs, how our costs are subdivided between our residential, commercial users and our industrial users and make sure that, um, you know, we're charging, we, we appropriately have those allocated based on, based on use so that industry isn't necessarily subsidizing the, the residential, commercial users and residential, commercial users aren't subsidizing our industries.
Steve, prior to the commitments made for these large infrastructure improvements needed, um, in recent years, what, what typically were rate, um, increases year to year? Well, um, I think.
It peaks. I mean, there's, um, there's years, there's years in the past, as, as we've brought on capital improvements, we've seen rate increases, I would say, on the water side upwards of ten, twelve, thirteen percent. And then coming out of those projects, we might see a following year where we take that all the way back down to zero and we, we kind of over, it seems historically we've overcompensated one way and the other. But on the water side, I would say twelve, thirteen percent's probably the higher side.
Sure. Comparisons, like, like you said, it's hard to anticipate what other cities are going to look like in four to five years, but comparison of rates, um, at the beginning of the discussion, we did that generally, where did we fall in line with peer communities in terms of, uh, recent rates and existing rates?
We're in the middle of our rates. We're in the middle. Certainly these, these are gonna, these will probably push us up a notch, um, a notch closer to the higher rate communities. I do not, I can't necessarily pinpoint the five or six communities we look at, but they're generally the, the other class one cities that are of similar size are the cities we, we compare ourselves to. Again, we, we tend to be in the middle of the range. Certainly these rates, without knowing what those communities are doing for, um, for rate increases over the next year, either this year or next year, uh, I can't, I can't model our rate against those rates, but we're not, we're certainly not the highest.
Any other questions or discussion on this?
I think I'd ask that, we're, we're talking about the rates, but maybe what the infrastructure that these rates are for, what infrastructure's going to be, um, added, replaced, fixed, new, whatever that might be of the reasoning why these rates are being discussed.
The biggest one, the biggest one before us right now, and I, and I could, um, you know, if we wanted to back up a little bit to the, to the ten-year capital plan, those, you know, you go to the ten-year capital plan and look at those water projects that are listed and that's what these rates are going to be covering. Certainly the big one out there is, is the, um, the new production well and the, the plant improvements to, to take another three and a half to four million gallons a day. The well, well, I think it's well fourteen would be the next production well. And is that correct?
That and the grit system, correct, Steve?
On the, so the, on the sewer side, yeah. It would be the grit system. That's probably the big one right now on the sewer side.
I think where I was going with that is we've discussed that a little bit throughout, um, the weeks or months or even in budget, but maybe it was worth discussing what those are and what those, what those costs are of those projects, maybe as line items, just to show the reasoning for the rate increases or the projected rate increases and what those increases are actually.
Okay.
Why, why we would be doing that and what they would be covering.
So I've got the capital plan back up here. So on the water side, we have the West Water Tramp, West Water Treatment Plant Improvements. Uh, those are improved, improvements to the facility, pumps, um, some piping and internal piping, that's four point two million. We have the two million gallon storage tank, uh, that's currently going in, that's four point, just under four point four million. We have the West Well, um, the production well, well fourteen. That is. That is just, that is about nine point nine million on the production well. As we get out further and those, those are within our, within our capital program, those are budgeted out through fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. As you get beyond twenty-twenty-six, um, we have a, it would be item number eleven on the capital plan, it's a twenty-inch water main, um, addition out in the Victory Road area, Victory Road, Monroe Avenue area. That's about seven point five three million. That's scheduled to begin in fiscal year twenty-thirty and extend through twenty-thirty-one. Depending on how growth develops and how load develops, that could be, you know, that, that might float a year or two or even three, um, into the future. Looking at line item fourteen, that's part of, there's another six point eight million there, um, that's part of that water main, that water transmission main expansion. There's some gray water stuff out there that we've been talking about, that's way out there in fiscal year twenty-thirty-two, twenty-thirty-three. We anticipate if we do that, it looks like we're listed somewhere between other funds and federal funds, uh, the vast majority of that, that would be capital contribution from industri, industries as well as some, um, federal funds that would be anticipated to help pay for, for the gray water system. Those are the big ones that are out there on water. It's heavy, heavy on the West Well, so I'd say the big ones are the, the West Plant Improvements, the production well, and then, uh, a very large transmission main that would be out on Monroe over to Victory and north on Victory up to the booster station.
All right. Thank you. I, I didn't add those together, what they come to, I just thought it was worth noting of what those increases were covering and the expense that those would be, so, thank you.
You know, and, and again, I, um, our water rates, I think, are positioned real well. I think we've done a very good job maintaining those and, and moving those. And I did, I did bring that up just to answer, answer that question earlier. Back in, it's like nineteen ninety-five, we had about an eight percent. Somewhere around two thousand eight, we had a ten point, ten and a quarter percent. Twenty sixteen, we were eight point five percent. So those are some of the spikes, uh, over, over those years. Our average, uh, over about twenty-five years, twenty-eight years is three point four percent on the water.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay. If not, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section two dash five of the official city code to update when water rates and wastewater treatment rates, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution fifty-nine hundred carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and wa, and waive the second and third readings.
Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution, ordinance fifty-nine hundred carries on second and third.
Item thirty-seven, we look for a motion to consider approval of an addendum agreement with Norfolk Area Transit Incorporated Nebraska Nonprofit Corporation amending terms of the January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four agreement to remove the requirement that Norfolk Area Transit provide the city with an annual audit of their financial statements by a certified public accountant and instead require Norfolk Area Transit to provide the city with a copy of any audits of Norfolk Area Transit's financial statements that are completed as a requirement of the state of Nebraska or any federal government agency.
I just want to say through my council role, I sit on the transit board as a board member, so I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the addendum agreement with Norfolk Area Transit.
Motion second, and for background on this, Randy or, Randy Gates?
Yes, this, this was requested by Norfolk Area Transit. They are having trouble getting the state to reimburse them for the audit cost and those costs are substantial. The first two years that are, uh, they're trying to get audited are years that were affected by Jeffrey Stewart's fraud and so the, the books aren't in real good shape. And I think they're expecting sixty thousand dollars or so a year or better for those audits. So it's, it's important that they get reimbursed for those and, uh, the state is saying because it's the requirement of our contract that they're not wanting to reimburse it. So, um, Transit asks that we remove that requirement and instead replace it with, um, we could get a copy of the other, any other audits they need. And they need a federal single audit because of the large amount of federal funding they have. So there will be a, an audit done and we will get a copy of that, but it removes a problem they're having with the state getting reimbursed for that. And there's members from Norfolk Transit here that can address that further.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions regarding the audit process beyond what Randy explained?
I guess just clarification, Randy, we can ask for the audit receipt at any time with this amendment?
Yes, we, uh, with this amendment, they should automatically, uh, provide us their audit within thirty days of receipt. And we can also ask under this amendment for, um, financial reporting that we want. So we may ask for additional reporting over and above what's in that audit. For instance, the amount of remaining city funds, uh, that type of thing, that's probably going to be difficult to determine and I don't think there probably is any for the first couple of years, but when you get into the third year of, of the contract, uh, there may be.
Okay. And then will they be able to re, get reimbursed for the last two years if we pass those tonight?
My understanding is if we remove these requirements, I'll let Lacy talk about that.
Lacy Kimes, board president for Norfolk Area Transit. That is an ongoing, um, issue that we are dealing with, with the Nebraska Department of Transportation. Doing this addendum would not guarantee that we would be reimbursed for the audit that is going on at this time, but, um, it could certainly help in continuing the conversations with the state.
Okay. Thank you, Lacy. Any other questions for Lacy?
Lacy, any other communities that have transit, are they experiencing the same issues of not, of not reimbursement in a speedy manner?
Uh, being reimbursed in general?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not alone in that.
Yes, that's what, that's my question.
Yeah. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
I think so. Thank you, Lacy. Any other discussion on this? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Snorton, Hildebrand, Murin, abstaining, Webb, motion carries.
Okay. Not quite done yet. This is, uh, public comment period, no further items on the council agenda, but public comment period, um, a time in which anyone can come forward with, uh, questions, comments, commendations, airing of grief, grievances, et cetera. So we'll open the floor.
Hello, Melissa Temple. I am speaking tonight in my personal capacity as a resident of Norfolk, not as a representative of any elected or appointed position that I have. First, I want to thank you for passing the Language Access Plan and listening to the voices of your district and your constituents. It makes me really proud to be a part of this community. Second, I was also very impressed with the- with the climate survey that's going to be conducted. I think that will make this a healthier place to work for your employees. And along those same lines, I and the rest of the public were made aware of the city officers from the police department that were placed on administrative leave recently, while employees and former employees' complaints are being investigated. And I'm sure there is much, the public doesn't know about it, there's a lot, I don't know about that situation, and it should probably remain confidential, but I just want to express that I am proud and grateful that the city is listening to its employees, doing their due diligence to thoroughly investigate the accusations, and ensure that everyone is treated fairly and justly regardless of whether they're a superior or a subordinate. So I guess what I want to communicate is that somebody's voice is the most powerful instrument that they have to create change in this world. And for some people, it's their only tool that they have to create change in this world. And to have that voice diminished or dismissed or silenced is devastating, and it can have repercussions for the rest of their life, and it can hurt us as a community. So thank you for not only listening and believing people's stories, but also having an outside agency audit and investigate these complaints to avoid any potential conflicts of interest or biases. That is a model that every company and organization and government office should also replicate. The seriousness and solemnity by which you are handling this matter gives me hope. And I'm sure it's a very hard and sad and unfortunate situation, but my trust in this city, being truly for its citizens, has been strengthened. So thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Anything else?
Jim McKenzie, first of all, I would urge you to continue to have these public comment periods at every city council meeting, as I believe is now required by state law and Nebraska Open Meetings Act. Second of all, I do have a follow-up question. On the budget from last, the last meeting when it was presented, there was $18 million that was shown under the completed capital improvement projects for widening Benjamin Avenue from four lanes to five lanes. It was my understanding that project only was about $13 million. And I didn't see anything on there for the First Street Bridge Roundabout and Storm Sewer Movement. And so my question is, was that lumped in with that $18 million?
That's a good question, Jim. I think, I'll let Steve explain how that works, but I believe it was packaged together as part of a highway improvement.
The Benjamin, or Benjamin Avenue project, the, I don't remember the exact numbers, roughly the, the construction contract was about $13,275,000, somewhere around there. On top of that is the, the design services, it was about a million dollars, construction administration services, right-of-way purchase, right-of-way negotiation, all of that added up to about 18 million.
So there was nothing in the First Street project that was included in that 18 million?
Was the 18 million, was the 18 million a bond number, or was the 18 million referred to as the cost of Benjamin Avenue?
That was referred to as the cost of Benjamin Avenue.
That was just Benjamin Avenue.
Okay. And so I know you issued about $20 million of bonds, and I thought that was for Benjamin, Michigan, and the First Street project.
That is correct.
So that doesn't add up to what we need for that. That's 21 million for Benjamin Avenue in Michigan. So how did the extra $5.6 million get paid?
With, with city highway allocation funds.
So that came directly out of CHAF?
Yes.
Okay, that wasn't part of it, was bonded?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you. And lastly, I just wanted to mention on the budget that you approved, there was not a penny of, that budget was allocated toward the much-needed and long-overdue police station expansion. We're asking the citizens to approve a $16 million sales increase to pay for it, sales tax increase to pay for it. All the while, we seem to have plenty of dollars for other discretionary items such as landscaping, artwork, other issues. You know, if the roof is leaking in your house, you don't say, well, I'm not going to use my money to fix that, I'm going to plant some more bushes and flowers, you fix the roof. And so, you know, I think our priorities have become a little bit misaligned. It seems that very important public safety project request like this has taken a backseat to other spending for the last couple of years. And I'm just disappointed that we didn't allocate any funds in our budget toward this, and it all has to be a new tax increase. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment? I will say on that note, Jim, as you're well aware, this is the police station, we've talked about big-ticket infrastructure projects ongoing in the city that we've had to find creative ways to finance because we don't have all the money sitting around to deploy. You have regularly mentioned landscaping and art. I think if you took a, if anybody took a real look at that, those numbers dwindle in comparison to what this project costs as a whole, which is why we've had to go to citizens to ask about determining priorities to make improvements. So I'm not sure that it's fair to compare apples to apples here. I'll just say that about that. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? All right, if not, that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.